Good evening. Today is Monday, April the 13th. And this is the Cabarrus County Board of Education meeting for business meeting. And I would like to call this meeting to order. To begin with, we'll have our presentation of colors by J.M. Robinson High School Air Force JRTC cadets and the pledge of allegiance by Dr. Robert Kirk. If you will all stand in readiness.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me take time to introduce the J.M. Robinson High School Air Force ROTC cadets. Colonel Tyler Forget. I'm sorry, I've read this totally out of ro- okay. All right. Sometimes it's just hard to read when you don't have good eyes. All right. The U.S. flag was held by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Tyler Forget, the North Carolina flag Cadet Major Jenna Petty, the guarding of the flags Cadet Major Kelly Brown and Cadet Technical Sergeant Nate Tretow. The cadets were instructed by Lieutenant Colonel Scott Rose, U.S. Air Force retired, and Sergeant Major Wayne Outrum, U.S. Air Force retired. We thank you for your attention on that. And now we have our deputy tonight is Deputy T.R. Norman Boger, and he's at Boger Elementary. He's our SRO for this evening, and I would like to thank him. I don't see him in the room at this moment, but there you are hiding behind everyone. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your service to our students, and we know that they appreciate you. Thank you very much. Board members, it's time to set the agenda. So I'll need a motion to set the agenda.
Sub moved.
Mr. Harrison, I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Phillips, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Agenda has been set, and now we'll do our Impact Through Education awards. Mrs. Ronnie Boone is going to come forward, and she's going to begin our presentations.
Tonight, we will recognize students and staff members at Weddington Hills Elementary School and Harold E. Winkler Middle School for our Impact Through Education awards. We want to say a special thank you to our friends at Concord Printing who make these awards possible with their generous sponsorship, so we thank them for their continued support of this program. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the Weddington Hills Elementary Administrative Team to please come forward to stand with their students and staff. And our first honoree from Weddington Hills Elementary is Colin Seitz. Would Colin and his family please come forward? If I could get y'all to take one step forward, everybody. There you go. Great. Colin Seitz is an extraordinary student with an amazing mind. His work ethic is one that will make him successful at whatever he chooses to do. He is a part of the Safety Patrol team that greets and manages the hallways in the morning, and as a cool cat, he helps the students in one of our kindergarten classes to get ready for their school day. He has taken his role as Wildcat news anchor to a level that is fun and entertaining for the students to watch. Colin is a role model for all students. He spends his Friday afternoons and many lunch breaks working with one of the students in the autism class at the school. His leadership role on the playground, whether playing a game of soccer or throwing a football, always seems to encourage others to join in. Colin participated in the school's Susaco play and is a state Young Authors Award winner and is also a member of the Odyssey of the Mind team that won first place regionally. His hard work and positive outlook on education impacts everyone around him. Congratulations, Colin, for being a recipient of the Impact Through Education Award for Weddington Hills Elementary School. Would Lexi and her family please come forward? Squishing a little closer together. There you go. Lexi Waller is an amazing student with a heart of gold. She has many responsibilities that impact her school in positive ways. Lexi begins her day as a cool cat where she goes into a second grade classroom and works one-on-one with students. She also helps the teacher with organizational tasks. Lexi is a smiling face to all Wildcats at the Wildcats store. As for mentoring and being a positive role model for other students, Lexi volunteers her Friday afternoons to help out in one of the school's autistic classrooms. Academically, she's the ideal student, always listening and following directions and going above and beyond in the classroom. She participated in Odyssey of the Mind, and as I've stated earlier, her team placed first in the region and is going on to the state competition. Lexi participated in the school's Susaco play and is preparing now for the Weddington Hills 5K. She encourages all students during Wildcats on the Move to keep striving to do their best. As a role model for others, Lexi is positively impacting her school environment. Congratulations, Lexi, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award. Would Ms. Hooks and her family please come forward? Mary Hooks has been a member of the Wildcat family since January of 2014. She joined the staff as the IB Coordinator for the school's new endeavor into the international baccalaureate world as a Primary Years Program Candidate School. In Mary's role as coordinator, she has made a significant impact on the school. She is highly respected among the IB community throughout the world and has impressed Weddington Hills staff with her knowledge about and passion for the program. She has led the work of teams of teachers as they developed all of the required components of becoming an IB school. She meets weekly with the professional learning communities, completes IB unit reflections, provides orientation for new families, and provides training for staff. Her passions for IB and for learning are contagious. She's always positive, and although she has only been at the school for a short time, her impact has been tremendous. Congratulations, Ms. Hooks, for being selected as an Impact Through Education Award winner for Weddington Hills. And our final honoree this evening from Weddington Hills Elementary School is Ms. Debbie Cutler. Would Ms. Cutler and her family please come forward? Debbie Cutler has been a member of the Weddington Wildcat family since 2009. She has served as an individual assistant for EC students and most recently as a teacher assistant. Debbie is well-respected by students and staff. She has an incredible heart full of compassion for all children. She is willing to do whatever it takes to help students be successful. She has provided care for students with physical disabilities, played mom for students whose parents couldn't attend events, provided interventions for students who were struggling, supplied materials for students who needed them, taught direct instruction and guided reading and math groups, and most recently worked in the school's after-school tutoring program. Debbie is always positive and on the go. She hits the ground running and doesn't stop until the end of her day. She is a great role model for the students and the staff. Weddington Hills is a better place because of the impact of the love and support that she provides the children. Ms. Cutler, thank you for your contributions and support. Congratulations on receiving the Impact Through Education Award. I'd like to invite any members of the Winkler Middle School Administrative Team to come forward to stand with their students and staff. Our first honoree from Winkler Middle School is Bryson Foster. Would Bryson and his family please come forward? Bryson Foster is an eighth grader and a friendly young man who is an excellent student and very involved in Winkler sports. At home game events, Bryson is the official announcer and announces the athletes' names before each game. He also does a wonderful job on the Winkler Morning News delivering the sports. Bryson shows Winkler School's spirit enthusiastically and is always happy to do whatever is asked of him. Bryson is well-respected by his peers and represents Winkler well, whether in the office as a student assistant or in the community as an ambassador for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. We are very proud of Bryson and his accomplishments and are happy to recognize him as an Impact Through Education Award winner for Winkler Middle School. Congratulations. Would Madison and her family please come forward? Madison Kirkman, a seventh grader, is a straight A student who works hard both in and outside the classroom. She's a member of the Winkler soccer team and also plays club soccer. She's a member of the National Junior Honor Society and enjoys writing and learning Spanish. She's an avid reader and walks the halls with a smile on her face. Madison exemplifies what a true Winkler Wolf should be on a daily basis: respectful, responsible, and safe. And for that reason, we are thrilled to recognize her as an Impact Through Education Award winner. Congratulations. Would Ms. Louder and her family please come forward? Quay Louder is a sixth grade math teacher at Winkler Middle School. She's been teaching in the district for 25 years and has been at Winkler for the past four years. Mrs. Louder has touched the lives of many children by her kind, loving heart and by getting to know her students personally in her classroom. In addition to her regular teaching duties, Mrs. Louder tutors students before school, serves on various school committees, and plays a lead role in the district's math professional learning community. Mrs. Louder is an excellent teacher, leader, and colleague who's always willing to go above and beyond to ensure that all of her students' needs are met. She has had a truly positive impact on the Winkler Middle School community. Congratulations, Mrs. Louder, on receiving an Impact Through Education Award. Would Ms. Altshuler and her family please come forward? Johanna Altshuler has been the Spanish interpreter at Winkler Middle School for the past four years. She does an excellent job of assisting teachers in interpreting parent conferences, IEP meetings, and school events. Mrs. Altshuler plays an instrumental role in the school's newcomer program. She translates for students who are both new to our country and to the school and helps them become familiar with the culture and the community. Teachers, staff, and parents rely on her immensely, and she is always happy to help with a smile. Winkler Middle School is fortunate to have her on staff. Congratulations, Mrs. Altshuler, and thank you for making an Impact Through Education.
What a wonderful time to acknowledge folks. And now we have the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month Award, Mr. Tim Vaughn. If you can come up and join Mrs. Ronnie Boone and Dr. Louder, are you going to go down front? I don't know if you need to.
Yes, he is.
Yes, he is. So Dr. Louder is coming down front.
I'm excited to fill in tonight for Mrs. Jones and present the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for April. Mr. Vaughn, we always want to thank you and Hillbush Ford for your continued commitment to Cabarrus County schools and to helping us honor just a few of our outstanding teachers. The Cabarrus County Schools Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for April is Ms. Melanie Iliker. Would Ms. Iliker and her family and any members of her school's administrative team please Melanie is a theater teacher at Hickory Ridge High School, and she was nominated for this month's award by a parent who wrote, "Melanie Iliker consistently goes above and beyond for her students. Dedicating herself to students and her craft, she instills in her students a respect for the theater, themselves, and for each other. She teaches her students not only the understanding of the theater, but also the need to respect every aspect of the craft, not just the actors on the stage. Her students respect and admire her, and they work hard to do their very best for Ms. Iliker." Ms. Iliker, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, we thank you for instilling that love for the theater in your students, and we appreciate all of your contributions. Please allow Mr. Vaughn and Dr. Louder to present you with your awards. And now let the board members congratulate you.
Now we're going to move to the National Skills USA Masonry Expert. Mrs. Lisa Conger, come on down.
And I am not the masonry expert.
Oh, oh.
But tonight, our masonry expert cannot be with us, but he will be traveling to the state competition, then we'd like to recognize him when he finishes there because it is a really phenomenal thing that he's done as a national coach. So we'll recognize him hopefully after they get back from skills next month.
So we will set this up for June?
Yes, for June, yes, sir.
Okay.
But we do have other recognitions tonight.
Well, and I would like to introduce those because I have another introduction I'd like to make. Ms. Liz Poole is here. She's one of our, she's our vice chair of our commissioners, but more importantly, she works with Lisa, and she and I had a conversation a little while ago, and we were talking about work keys. And I said, you know, five years ago, I did work keys, and I got a platinum on it. And I don't think I could have gotten a platinum doing work keys if I hadn't have been in industry and had to apply the knowledge that I did. And she and I talked about it, and I said, we need to recognize students that achieve this level. I think it's just so important that, because that is really exceptional level when you look at what they have to go through to do the work keys. Ms. Conger, go ahead. I'm sorry, I stole your thunder, but I just wanted to introduce.
Well, that's all right. I was trying to figure out how I was going to work in that you were a platinum recipient also, so thank you. Well, you're going to find out how prestigious that is in just a minute. I'd like to thank you for allowing me time to share a very special recognition tonight. Each year, seniors across North Carolina take the ACT Work Keys Assessment. Students can earn ACT National Career Readyness Certificate at the platinum, gold, silver, or bronze level based on their scores on three core tests, and that would be applied mathematics, locating information, and reading for information. These assessments measure real-world skills that employers believe are critical to job success. ACT Work Key scores are also significant predictors of success in post-secondary education and training programs. Approximately 1% of individuals who take the assessment score at the platinum level. And this is the first year that we've had this many students, and we are so proud of them. We have a few career development coordinators with us tonight, and I'd like for them to come to the front so that they can stand with their students. Students, when I call your name, please come to the front and wait while I recognize all recipients. From Concord High School, Austin Doitt. Representing Cox Mill High School, Zachary Gaynor. From J.M. Robinson High School, Chase Porter. From JM Robinson High School, Chase Porter. Thomas Tan. And Catherine England. Catherine could not be with us tonight. And from Northwest Cabarrus High School, Kaylee Schnell. And Dr. Louder, if you would come to the front, we have certificates for these, young And students, if you will, shake hands and allow Dr. Louder to congratulate you. And if you will, shake hands with the board and allow them to recognize you as well.
All right. Youth and Art Month was just recently celebrated, and the Superintendent's Choice Awards, Dr. Louder and Ms. Rachel Wilks will be presenting those.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Louder, Chairman Shoemaker, and other school board members for letting the CCF take a part of the program tonight. We are always extremely honored to sponsor these awards every year, and I would like to take the time to thank Michelle Turner for being the Visual Arts Coordinator for this year, as well as the other district staff who helped highlight all of the amazing artistic talents that we have in this district, as well as helping make Youth Art Month such a wonderful celebration. So, without further ado, for our elementary school level category, I would like to present Alex Dees. He's a fourth grader at Wyancoff Elementary School. And Alex's art teacher is Amy Henderson. Would Alex please come to the front? And if Ms. Henderson is here as well, we'd love to have her join us. And I'm going to present a check to you, Alex, and we're going to take a photo of you with your work.
Here's a battery, you can just set it down on the floor.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you. And for those of you that don't know, we will have, all of our Superintendent's Choice Art Awards are on permanent display here at the Education Center. So, thank you, Alex, for letting us view your work every day. All right. Our Middle School Choice Award winner this year is Alexa Smith, an eighth grader at Jane Freese Magnet School. Her piece is entitled, "Calmness of the Sea," and her art teacher is Meredith Farrell. Would Alexa and Ms. Farrell please join us? And last but not least, our High School Choice Art Award winner is Mary Martinez, a twelfth grader at Northwest Cabarrus High School. Her piece is entitled, "By the Lights," and her art teacher is Deanna Ladd. Would Mary and Ms. Ladd please join us? All right, well, maybe we can at least show everyone here what she created.[1532.88][1532.88][applause]
At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Barry Shepherd, I thought I saw him in the room. There you are. He's on the press, he's now a press correspondent. Please come on down. Dr. Louder, if you'll come with me. Before I stand up in front with Dr. Shepherd, I just wanted to present him a plaque, and it says, "With heartfelt thanks and grateful appreciation for your dedicated service to the students and staff of Cabarrus County Schools, February 2008 through March 2015." We give this to you, Dr. Shepherd, and we really do appreciate all that you've done for our students during, especially the tough economic times that we went through, and this school district has continued to excel. All right. Dr. Louder is heading down to the podium, and he has the NCSBA Recognition of Training Hours.
And at this time, I'd like to recognize two of our board members for successful completion of school board training at the North Carolina School Board Association Academy for School Boardsmanship during the 2013-2014 Academy Year.
All right.